Under God, indivisible, with love of faith and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to proceed the election of officers and I will relinquish the meeting to our newly elected chair, so at this time, I would entertain the motions for nomination of the chair.
I make my.
I heard two people speaking.
Nominate, Mike.
A second.
You accept?
I accept. Unfinished business has to be taken care of.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Okay, thank you. And we'll go right into nomination for vice chair.
I make motion for Ariana Seb for vice.
Is there a second on that?
Can I nominate someone else?
Pardon me?
Can I nominate someone else?
There's no second on that, so we can't nominate someone else. Nomination for Schneider, do we have a second on that?
I have a second, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Order one. AOS member, don't we have two?
We do, but the reason there's only one listed is because you were an AOS member last year-
That's right.
-and your service is uninterrupted and continued, so...
So we need another AOS board member?
If nobody else wants to all take it?
I will nominate you, Wanda. Have a second on that?
I'll figure that out.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, there we go. Do you have any public participation tonight? Mr. Sutcliffe?
Yeah, I did said a couple of questions that I've been beginning to ask. A few months ago, when it was brought up about the bullying issue by us, at one of the meetings, Ms. Forman had mentioned that October was bullying month and she was having someone come down to speak to the school. I just wanted to know if anybody knew for sure, because I went through, but I couldn't find out what the date was. Like I watched some of the video.
I can get some information, follow up on that.
Yeah, please. And then I had another, just a question to ask you more too.
Another question?
Like another thing I wanted to ask.
Go right ahead.
With Sadens main, as everyone knows about passing of Diane, Ms. Tyler, I noticed that quite a few students on Facebook, you know, had voiced their, you know, their... I didn't know if the school or the school board had talked about the school starting again, about going back. I know she hadn't been there awhile, but it did affect quite a few, about maybe having a discussion or having somebody come down, or did it be brought up that maybe it's better to leave it alone? I thought maybe that should be addressed somehow, if that would be in the best interest of the kids down there as a whole that knew her, because she did affect a lot of children in a positive light.
I have talked, Chris, to some, a couple of parents, and I think there's a great interest in, you know, us doing something for Ms. Tyler on behalf of our students.
That's what I was wondering, you know, if something, or if it was something that was brought up, or, you know, because it was... I was surprised and thrilled that the kids, you know, spoke up on, well not spoke up, but on Facebook, you know, was so loving and caring towards this woman, but there was nothing on the Lubec Consolidated Facebook page, nothing on their official page, even to acknowledge that she did pass.
Yeah, I don't know if the school's having anything, I don't know if there's any discussion down there with the teachers at all.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if you guys were aware of anything, or maybe it was discussed that maybe it would've been better work than a few months to let it go, but...
Can check on that and find out, and I'll ask and see if we can promote that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Yes, I would like to congratulate the new board members. And I would also like to thank Ms. Tezlow on her service on the board. I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other public participation? Okay. To consider the approval of the following school committee minutes as written or with corrections as recommended by the superintendent of schools. We have two of them, May 30th, 2019, and this was a full meeting.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Oh, no.
Technically, you can't vote on it because you weren't a member of the meeting, but you can ask a question.
Question, okay. I'm, I was wondering, on, on your upgrade for the security system, that they're taking this out of the, which I'm glad that they're going to be doing with Mr. Johnson, out of the instructional television fund, and I'm wondering what the amount was in that account, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, let me see if I've got that here. I do believe, I do believe there will be money left on that line, that unexpended grant funds or miscellines, so... Yes, I've got it here. ITV supplies, seventeen thousand, one eighty-four, and the amount remaining at the end of the year, eleven thousand, zero fifty-nine, eighty-five dollars, so something tells me we pay half down in advance of the work. That started to, that started to trigger my memory. But the starting point for that, Wanda, seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars, I'm going from memory, but I believe the estimate was something in the thirteen thousand dollar range, so the sixty-one, twenty-four, fifteen, I'm showing it being spent, would be for half the job, half upfront, half when it is completed.
Yeah, you know, when they expect to start that, or...
This is Tina's principal's report.
Principal's report.
And it says, since you asked, it says, "Cico Security will be here the week of August 26th."
Thank you.
Is there a motion on this?
I'm looking to approve the May 30th minutes.
Okay, second on that motion? Any further discussion on May 30th school committee minutes? All in favor? And June 13th? June 13th was an executive session, order. I have a motion on this. Is there a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor accepting June 13th emergency school committee meeting minutes? Principal's report.
Yes. Tina sends her apologies, she is knee deep in blueberries and apparently has to truck them all the way over to Franklin this year, so that's, that's quite a haul. But anyway, she did send her report to me. It says, "The math program," and this question is also in my report as well, so you get in a little preview here, and my report versus math curriculum update, she provides some additional information to the board here, that the math program is an update, not a change in programming, and this will be paid for with federal funds. Heather Henry has approval to pay that with existing federal funds, and at this point, if we don't spend that federal money by September 30th, it has to go back to the feds. So it is in our best interest to spend it particularly to the advantage of our children, so she is proposing, with Heather's support, to put those funds to use to update the everyday math curriculum.
How much was that?
Ten thousand dollars.
What will they usually mainly use that for, books, or what will they use that for, upgrade books?
Not, not just books, but also student workbooks. The everyday math curriculum does have a technology feature built into it, there's professional development and training available for our teachers, and again, if we don't use the federal funds by September 30th, they have to go back, so it is by far in our best interest to use those. Also, in Tina's report, you see a little later on in the agenda, we will be voting to change an early release date, and she's got the rationale for that in her report. It says, "The reasoning behind changing the early release date is to be able to have training for the TREE program with Brittany Ray. Ms. Ray's availability can't be, can't be accommodated on the original date." And then, and I'm sure, are we familiar with the TREE program? That basically helps school districts work with trauma that students may be experiencing in various forms, but that's why she is requesting we change the early release date to accommodate that training. Cico Security, as I just stated, will be here the week of August 26th. Last thing in Tina's report for this evening, she says, "I know we are on the schedule for the roof project, but have not been given an exact date due to the illness of a person that's in charge of the project." So she has been in contact with Roofing Systems of Maine, and apparently they have not just confirmed with a date, but we are on the, we are on the schedule, and hopefully the court shows. Yes, yes.
On the security, Mr. Johnson, who makes the decision on where these cameras, where will they be placed, and how many?
Cico Security would make the decision as to what is the best placement for the cameras to get coverage. In the quote, and I haven't got it in front of me, it lists a number of camera units. One, I can say, that has come up for discussion, will be on the outside of the parking lot, basically looking at our buses to make sure they're nice and tidy and safe in the evening. Obviously, one on the main entrance, and some others scattered around the building, but beyond those two, the main entrance and the parking lot, I don't know where the rest will be, but it is listed in the quote from Cico Security, and it's based on their recommendation.
Okay, anything from the school board?
I just had a couple of things. One thing I'd like to do and ask, talk to Mr. Johnson about, I'd like to have the opportunity to go down after school start and to review, and I think you already could help me with this, to review the rooms and our student, like our student population, and how it pertains to, you know, the placement of our rooms right, right now. I don't know if I'd be allowed to do that, Mr. Johnson?
I mean, as far as I know, the building is accessible during the daytime, so if you wanted to see the rooms right now, I would encourage you to swing by in the parking lot during the daytime. I know Sheldon has been there, I was in the facility on July 18th, and the gym floor has been refinished, and the doors were open to allow for the floors to dry, so if you wanted to drive by, I believe the building is accessible in the summertime, and as far as student population, right now, we do have projections, but certainly, once we have our first student day or after Labor Day, we'll know how many kids we have.
Is Norine down there, what day is she down there?
I believe her contract is two weeks before and two weeks after, so I don't think she's there regularly yet, but she is in and out, keeping up with the mail, checking messages and so on, so I don't think she's there on a regular basis right now, but she soon will be.
I think when she is there, she's there in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, she's there a little bit.
And I'd like to bring this up, it doesn't have to really do with the school, but when we had the Fourth of July activities at our school, and, you know, we always have the kids, we always go into the field, and there's a gate there, and unfortunately, again, this year, it was locked, and I think we need to talk about somebody different having that key, because we had to get somebody to cut the deadbolt so we could use that, and we had gone down to the school and asked, we got permission to use the school grounds and all of that, but that's very discouraging, that, that, that field out there is, who has people on it?
Who, who has the key right now?
I'm not sure who has it, but somebody else that we know is going to keep that open when it has to be opened.
Are we talking about the soccer field?
Yeah, and we have that every year, we have the kid races down there, but I, I appreciate that. And now, on your policies, real quick, Mr. Johnson, how do you choose what policies you're going to review? Do you do it like all of your schools, do they all, you do all of them at the same time with all of the schools?
So, when a, when a law changes, and I'm going down to Augusta on September 13th to be briefed on the changes of the legislature, and there were many this last session, Main School Management sends superintendents updated policies to reflect the changes in the law. So the policies come to me from Main School Management, Charlotte Bates is the contact person there, and I put them on the agenda for boards to consider, but that's how, that's how it flows. Charlotte Bates herself is an attorney, but Main School Management has people who attend the legislative sessions to monitor the changes, and that is what happens. If there's a change in educational law, matching policy follows, and those come to us from Main School Management. Some policies are required, and in your policy manual, there should be an index as to what's required and what's recommended, and every school department has custom policies for unique things that pertain to their own schools. So that's how it happens, and that's how they get on the agenda. If there's a change in the law, Main School Management sends us a draft, and as I've said before, they can be tweaked, but they come to us from Main School Management.
Now, was this on the 13th, is that the conference, the fall conference?
No, no.
When, when do they have that meeting?
That is usually the third or fourth Thursday, Friday in October. I remember that because the last couple of Fridays, I've had to hustle back to get my kids into their Halloween costumes to go trick or treating in the child's, but fall conference, I will remind all my board members and all my staffs that the invitation is there. Third or fourth Friday, third or fourth Thursday and Friday in October, for what I'm going to on September 13th, that's a briefing, and that will be conducted by representatives of our legal service and also Main School Management on changes in law and policy.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Yes, I have several items here this evening. First, I'd like to appoint the following educational technicians, Dee Swain and Susan Aldrich on your agenda, you can see another name listed there, but that person withdrew, and sent me a written notification to that effect, so we will still need an educational technician. I've mentioned-
You running an ad for that right now?
Yeah, I believe the next issue with the courtite ads comes out on the 23rd, but we certainly will be looking to make that issue, but we will need one more red deck. I believe Dee's with us tonight. This is, this is Dee Swain? Welcome aboard. I mentioned the math curriculum update already, that was from Tina's principal's report. A couple idle items before I speak about the year-end budget from 2018-19. I have been reminded from the main department of transportation that they are planning a bridge repair project, so I'll just distribute a few copies of that. Maze bridge replacement. When are they set to start? Road closure of US Route 189 will start the morning of September 7th, 2019, with an anticipated end date of September 13th, 2019. Local traffic will be able to utilize the Crow's Neck Road as a detour around the project, but all large truck traffic will be detoured onto US Route 191. Just so you know, I did forward a copy of this message to Anna for purposes of school bus, and I, I don't know if people down here have heard about that or not, but I've got a couple extra notifications here, I can give one to you, John.
So what does a school must consider, the large truck or local traffic?
No, it'll fit on the, on the detour. Usually, if they close a two, a two-way bridge, they'll work on one lane at a time, with one way traffic, but there's a width limit, so I think your school bus will be fine, but probably not going to be getting a truck trailer down there.
I wanted to ask you, real quick too, that you've had, you have three people down here, what's the third person for? Did you have three?
I did.
And what was the third person? I thought we had Linda, and then we need one more for special ed, and what's the third one for them?
All reds.
What was it?
They're, they're all reds.
Yeah.
And we do need a special education technician for the classroom, this board voted to keep that in the budget, and one of these folks will be performing that function. We need a one-on-one educational technician, and we need a Title I-A educational technician. And the levels of, the levels of certification are pertinent to the, to the job assignment. I can, I can tell you that we are going to be asking Dee to be a classroom educational technician. Dee is working toward her special ed teaching certification, and right now, is an ed tech three. So, welcome aboard, again, Dee. So again, we need to hire a technician, and levels of certification are pertinent, it is still within the realm of possibility that existing employees could be reshuffled and reassigned to satisfy the certification requirements, and I don't want to get too far down that road, simply because during the summer months, truthfully, don't believe we've been able to notify the person that I had in mind. So at this point, the assignments will be revealed as we get a little closer toward the start of the school year, we're still waiting for at least one employee to get confirmation from the state as to what their status is, but these folks that I've nominated here tonight, we need them, they're going to be with us in one capacity or another, so the final assignment is still a little up in the air, but as I said, Dee knows what she's going to be doing.
So that each one of them, they're going to meet the need of whatever student that, I mean, one will be the classroom, but if any of them have, like you said, some of them are, are one, we're talking a one-on-one?
Right.
Does that meet the need of that student's level?
Okay, that, I, I can't comment extensively, but I can say that if the IEP team says a student needs a one-on-one, then we have to hire a one-on-one. And I can tell you that is policy and mandated basically by the State Department of Education that a one-on-one has to be an ed tech two or three, and that is because an ed tech two or three, if they're functioning as a one-on-one, they can leave the classroom. An ed tech one has to stay in the classroom, or basically lineup site supervision. A two or a three can pull out and go to different parts of the building and, and work with their student, so that's why that regulation is there. So I mentioned, I mentioned the detour.
Budget report.
Okay, so I, I got a couple of gender adjustments, that's the next thing. So, budget report, I've been asked to field questions, and I'm happy to do that. I sent the previous board members, and you would not have gotten this email, Wanda, because you, you just recently got back onto the board, but all of the board members got an email from me saying what your status was. I'm happy to say that we finished the year comfortably in the black, and the reason for that, and I can give you the number, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-six-eighty-seven forty-seven, which is a little bit higher than usual, and I'm happy to explain why that is the case. When we put together the 2018-19 budget, as you know, we were a little delayed that year, we received notification late in the process that there was a distinct possibility we were going to lose transportation for our two students to go to Callis Day Treatment. We had to make arrangements in the budget for busing, but I'm happy to say that Callis Day Treatment sent one of their employees as a private driver, whom we compensate, to take both of those students. The other reason, or not the other reason, but another reason that that carryover is higher than usual, the tuition to Callis Day Treatment, we were able to use federal funds, local entitlement funds, to pay a great portion of that tuition, and as a result, we did not have to expend local dollars. If you're curious, it's approximately forty thousand dollars a year per student in tuition to Callis Day Treatment. Two students represents eighty thousand dollars, and transportation costs were budgeted for separately. So we were able to use federal local entitlement dollars and spend that as opposed to spending your local money, so we were able to pull local money through. Other areas of savings in your budget, during the course of the year, we talked about bus applications, we had the chance to apply for a BW bus grant, and we had to build in a twenty percent match for two buses. We did not get the grant, ended up purchasing one school bus, but that was a difference of twenty-two or twenty-five thousand dollars, because the twenty percent match for two buses was forty thousand dollars, but one annual payment is like seventeen or eighteen, financed over a five-year period. So you pulled money through in transportation. The last major area that we ended up saving money on was in tuition, because, I'm going from memory, I think it's forty thousand, but I've got it right here in front of me, I can tell you.
Can you have an extra copy?
I will, I will give you mine as soon as I check this number. We pulled through forty thousand dollars on the tuition line, and that has to do with either changes in residency, people moving away, or things of that nature. So the major areas of cost savings, special education is a big one, transportation because of the buses, your tuition payment comes out of regular instruction, and the rest of the money would be accounted for the collective unexpendited lines.
Can you just say again, the transportation plan for these two students to Callis Day Treatment? Fell through, the, the planned method?
Yep.
And the alternative was much cheaper?
As it turned, as it turned out, so I'll, I'll rephrase, I'll, I'll rephrase, I'm happy to rephrase that, happy to go over it again, and I'll back up a little bit. If an IEP calls for transportation, then we have to provide it. So if an IEP places a student at Callis Day Treatment, we have to provide transportation. So if we can't find a private transporter, which is the cheaper end, we would have to put students on a bus and run a bus all the way to Callis. Have that bus wait there, probably, to save wear and tear, still pay the driver the hourly rate, because they'll be waiting, extra fuel, and, and so on. Sending a bus is extremely expensive. We save money by having a private transporter, and the person who provides that service is actually an employee of Callis Day Treatment program, and that person bills us for the hours that they're in the car and mileage. So that person isn't double-dipping, he's on the clock from, you know, this hour to this hour at Callis Day Treatment, and then he drives for us, and submits a time card, and, and the special ed director verifies that. That is by far the cheaper alternative, and that is, ended, that ended up happening, and that's what saved you some of the two-hundred-and-seventy or thousand dollars that I referenced, that was the savings. But if we did not realize that last second person coming to help us with Callis Day Treatment, we would have had to put two kids only on one of our buses and transport them to Callis, and there have been times where we've had to do that here, albeit for short, kind of short periods, but we've had to do that before.
Now, what happened in prior years, where this money wasn't available, or we just all of a sudden found out it was available?
What, local entitlement?
As far as the prior years and having federal funds pay for the tuition, and...
Local entitlement comes to you every year, it's a, it's a formula-based grant, so the types of items and data that goes into the formula, student numbers, your budgetary calculations, so actually, if you drastically slash your budget for whatever reason, the feds will lower their allocation to you. Poverty is also factored into that, it's a similar formula, though not identical to the one that generates Title I-A revenue. The application is processed late in the summer. I just recently approved the local entitlement applications for nineteen-twenty within the last week and a half, so it's very late in the summer that those applications come to us. So the obvious question would be, if you, if you think you're going to get federal allocation, can you cut the budget? You can, the risk you take is that if the federal allocation is less than you think it's going to be, you can end up with a shortfall. So that's, that's the risk that you take. What are some other usage, what have we used it for in the past? You can hire an employee with local entitlement funds, I have employees around the district, some of them are paid for through local entitlement. Educational technicians, one-on-ones can be paid with this money, with this source of money. In our case, because that's a high-dollar line, tuition to day treatment, it made sense for our special education director to put that in the application and get approved, because that's a big expense on the, on the special education cost center. So you can use it for other things, those are by far the two most common ones, tuition So you can use it for other things, uh, those are by far the two most common ones, tuition and employee salary and benefits. Uh, could we, if you wanted to cut your budget and cut the local appropriation upfront in anticipation of federal dollars, you can do that. But we don't know in advance what the federal dollars are going to be, and that, that's the risk that you take.
So where do we see that in the budget? Where, where is that in our budget?
It's not in your budget because it's federal money, we don't raise it here. But other sources of federal money besides local entitlement, Title One A, economically disadvantaged, those are for kids that are identified, and we're school-wide, by the way. But the intent of Title One A money is to kind of bridge the gap for students who don't qualify for special ed, but still might need a little help. So Title One A, economically disadvantaged, Title Two A, uh, professional development funds. And, uh, they, they used to fund technology, but they don't fund that anymore, that was too deep. But those are by far the biggest sources of federal dollars, uh, that are in play here and go back, local entitlement, Title One A and Two A. They don't appear in your budget, we don't vote on it because we don't raise it, it comes to us by formula, but we do spend it. So the warrant article at the very end that says, you know, permission to expend the total amount of your budget and other receipts that come in, as long as it doesn't, you don't have to over-expend local money, that's what it's talking about. Are your federal money at any grant that you might be able to realize along the way?
About how much would be in that in, in a year, uh, if you got a lunch sum, what, what does that usually consist of?
The total amount, I don't know the total amount off my head, if Heather Henry was here tonight, she could tell us, because she's worked, she's worked on the applications recently. But she'd be the person to ask.
Done?
That's all I had in my report, if there are no other questions.
That's it?
That was too much.
To consider the nomination of Sherry Cox, special education teacher for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Actually, I, I need, I need an adjustment to this.
Okay, go ahead and bring your adjustment.
Uh, two adjustments, actually. If we could, uh, add on, right after, uh, voting on the early release date, we'll make it number four, adopt adult lunch prices. We have that data from the state now. We will continue, we continue to qualify for the community program, so our students will be eating for free, but we do have to adopt adult lunch prices. And I will need just a brief executive session for parental request at the very end, it won't take very much time. Uh, but if we could just do those two, I'd be grateful.
Okay. So again, to consider the nomination of Sherry Cox, special education teacher for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Very good question.
Go right ahead.
Uh, is it possible, Mr. Johnson, for us to review, uh, their application?
Not in this format.
Yeah, this school board member was at their interview.
Right, so what-
Oh, okay.
So when I say not in this format, it's quite common for schools to have an interview team, and that can be made up of two board members, but not all, one or two. And here are the applications and you, and that team can see the applications. Here in open session, at a board meeting, we're in public, so not in this format, but-
What about another format?
The, the interview process that we use would be the only other format, uh, just so, just, just for, just to add to the discussion. I had somebody attempt to access an application under the Freedom of Information Act in another town. And, uh, the Freedom of Information Act specifically says that that's not in the public domain. Uh, so the in, the interviews that we do and we hire somebody, that's, that's a private interview, that's not in the public domain there. And all of us sign a non-disclosure form basically to that effect, so, um, I didn't intend that to sound like a snarky answer, but we're in public here. And it's been pretty common practice the last couple of years to request to board members if there's anybody interested. So if we have a vacancy moving forward, we've sent that invitation out the last several times and that will continue. So if you, if you've got some interest, so yeah, I love to expand.
Anytime there's any interviews for school and stuff like that, teacher, Ed Tech position and stuff like that, or even support staff position, school board members are invited.
I wouldn't, never, you know, ask in public about, uh, like I would ask you, can we vote you?
So-
But I think when we're making, considering to nominate somebody, I think the board member should be, you know, aware.
Well, like I said, I was at, I was at the interview with Ms. Cox, and I will actually make the motion. So, because I think she's very highly qualified, she's been with the system before, a couple of years ago. Um, as far as I know, she's got everything you need as far as, you know, special education degrees and stuff like that. And we understand the children have, um, a lot of respect for her.
Okay.
You two be a family, they are.
Okay.
So the motion's been made, any second on the motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then to consider changing the date of early release from September eighteenth back to September eleven, so that's one week back.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And number four, adult lunch prices. Okay, so, um, breakfast is two dollars and eighty cents.
For adults?
For adults, this is for adults, the kids, the kids will still have the, the free process. Um, so breakfast, two hun, two dollars and eighty cents, lunch, seven dollars and thirty cents, and salad bar is three dollars and fifty cents. And do I have a motion on that?
I'm moving.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, so right now, we're going to enter into executive session for what purpose?
Parental request.
Parental request.